I'm going to call this meeting to order.
The October 2013 meeting. It is 6:06. Mr. Secretary, would you give us the roll call this evening?
Yes. Mr. Hurd, here. Mr. Moore?
Here.
Ms. Drago, absent. Ms. Washington?
Here.
Mr. Borchman, absent. Mr. Neal?
Here.
Mr. Barhu?
Present.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Wright?
Here.
We now have a call.
Thank you. Before we go any further, I'd like to welcome Mr. Arthur Wright to the board. He's a representative from Zone 2.
Thank you.
All right.
Glad to be here.
You all have your copies of the minutes? Are there any additions, corrections, deletions? If not, may I have a motion?
So move. September 18th meeting. Number 2.
Second.
Number 2.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? Ayes have it. Then, the second minutes. And what's the date on the second set of minutes?
September 25.
Twenty-five.
September 25 minutes. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions? September 25 meeting? If not, may I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Minutes approved. To the members of the audience, if you wish to speak at any time tonight, I need you to fill out a green form that's up front. We need to have that for our records. If you intend to speak at all tonight, please complete one of the green forms we have up Secretary, item number four.
Res zoning residential plan year development, RPUV, DEV 2014, that's zero four, Cypress Point, RPUV.
Can we hear from staff?
Thank you. Dennis Morzek, planner with the city of Daytona Beach. This next item before you today is a request by Parker Mchenberg, P.E., Parker Mchenberg and Associates, on behalf of G.C. Land, LLC, to rezone 57.2 acres of property located on Champions Drive from single-family residential, R1A, and plan master development, PMD, to residential plan unit development, RPUV, to allow for the 131 single-family residential lots and approve a preliminary plat and to enter into a PD agreement. The property is, I'm having problems with this screen over here, so take a look at this one. The property is located just north of Champions Drive in the LPGA Development. It is located adjacent to the existing clubhouse. The future land use designation of the property is tourist accommodation. And the current zoning, again, is R1A and PMD, and the rezoning would be to a RPUV. The Cypress Point RPUV zoning does include the 57 acres, the 131 single-family dwellings. I've got a design, some of the design standards for you up there on the presentation, on the board. I do have also design standards for you available in your package. Those are the design standards that are available in the PD agreement. As far as the proposed dimensional standards, if you take a look, I've got, and this also mirrors what's in your packet, I've got the development lot standards for the R1A, which the property is currently zoned. The applicant has requested a reduction of some of the development standards, including the total lot area, minimum lot width. These are less than the R1A would normally permit, which is the larger of our single-family zoning districts, but it is consistent with what we might find in the R1B or the R1C. The lot dimensions are also consistent with the surrounding development. As far as waivers that are being requested with this PD rezoning application, again, the modifications to the lot development standards, also a reduction of a minimum separation between buildings from 15 feet to 10 feet, that's a reflection of the side setback, reduction of five feet. Also listed as a waiver is the ability to permit model homes within a development. We do have that listed as a waiver. The code does not really have standards in place for model homes. We did have the applicant include in the PD agreement language that we're going to be taking forward with the new land development code rewrite, so they mirrored that language that we're going to be having with the new land development code to be able to allow for the model homes. Now, here's the overall layout of the property. This is also the preliminary plat that you can be asked to make a recommendation on. Again, it's 131 lots. This has been reviewed by the city's technical review team and has been found to be acceptable. I also wanted to point out that the applicant did have a neighborhood meeting on the property, and they can go over the details of the neighborhood meeting and what they had discussed. As far as the recommendations, staff does recommend approval to rezone the 57.2 acres from R1A and PMD to the residential plan unit development to allow the 131 single-family residential lots, approval of the preliminary plat, and to enter into a PD agreement. The item is tentatively scheduled to be heard by the city commission for first reading on November 19th and for second reading on December 3rd, 2014, which will be the public hearing. An affirmative vote of six shall be required to recommend approval to the city commission. And that does conclude staff's presentation.
Thank you. Board, are there any questions of staff?
Yes. On the second item, reduction of minimum distance between buildings from 15 feet to 10 feet, is that homes that you're talking about?
Those are homes next to each other. As they're lot to lot, you have a five-foot setback, five-foot setback on the one lot, five-foot setback on the other lot. If they build to those setback lines, they'd be allowed to be, minimum distance there of the 10 feet.
Oh, that seems close. Okay.
I had a question for staff.
Sure.
Okay. My question is, if we were not to permit these waivers, is they designed to say how many homes would be permitted in that same acreage on those same 57 acres?
I can let the applicant speak a little bit more on that, but what you may find is a reduction in the actual size of the house where they would have the same amount of lots. The other opportunity would be larger lots and be able to meet those setbacks.
Setbacks, okay. Thank you. Mr. Harper?
What is the distance in the neighboring community between the homes?
There are some that are, I'd have to look exactly what it was, but I do know we have some consistency with some five-foot setbacks on some of the subdivisions. I believe that the, do you have, the applicant does have information on some of the surrounding subdivisions that are currently in place, so.
Yeah, I believe the villas that I live in in Pelican Bay, they're five-foot.
I believe they are.
All of those villas were that, with the 10-foot distance between them. And that's pretty typical for what they call, like, golf villas or whatever.
Can we hear from the applicant if there are no more questions?
My name's James Stowers. I'm a land use attorney with Wright, Casey &amp; Stowers. Our office is at 44A West Granada Boulevard in Ormond Beach. I'm here representing the applicant, Grand Champion Holdings, LLC, Parker Mchenberg and Associates, the engineers for our project. This goes back many months we've been working with staff on this project. To answer the first question, under the future land use for the tourist accommodation and retail, it allows up to 40 units per acre. What we're asking for is just under two units per acre at that 131 figure. So, from an intensity and density standpoint, what we're getting here, our goal from the beginning has been to be compatible with the development that has occurred out there over the last 10, 12 years. So, in keeping with that compatibility, that's where you see the 30-foot landscape buffer along the front. We think that's critical for anyone who's driving down that main thoroughfare through LPGA, so there's a consistency there. As far as setbacks, front, rear, side, we have the benefit of this being a master planned development. As we all know, it was previously a DRI, that's since sunset, but each of the developments have been planned, and so we have, whether it's Joyal at LPGA, Opal Hill at LPGA, Greyhawk, Sedona, we've had the benefit to go back and look through these and use these as a guide for square footage limitations, setbacks, and so forth. So, the five-foot setback, which has been discussed a couple times already, is right here, you know, in this development agreement for the Renard Golf Communities at LPGA International PMD Agreement. So, it is consistent with what has been developed out there. And so, we had, as was referenced earlier, a neighborhood meeting back in July, we sent out notices to property owners within 300 feet. We had only one resident, one that is adjacent to this site, come out, happy to talk to him, his issues were addressed. We obviously sent out the notices as part of this process as well. And we're happy to speak with any residents who have concerns and ensure that this is as transparent as possible, because we, you know, we believe in this project and we know it's going to be good for this community.
Okay.
So, with that, happy to answer. Any questions?
Board, do you have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Moore?
Yeah, it's not, not just the five feet we're talking about. The total lot area is a 20% variance that you're asking. The minimum lot width is a 20% variance you're asking. Of course, 50% variance on the side setback and 50% from the street, front setback 16.7% and rear setback 20%, plus the 33 and the 30% reductions from the homes. So, it's not just that one issue.
Sure.
It's many issues. How many extra homes of this 131, by making these variances, were you able to add to this development, rather than keeping it as far as what's required?
Yeah. I'll have to let Steve, if there even is an answer to that. The way we approached this was to look at the existing facts from the other neighborhoods. So, to, in, you know, I can, I'm happy to go through each one of those, but as I mentioned, we read through, I pored over all the other PMDs, and just as an example, our 7250 lot size, the Joyal, LPGA, minimum lot area is 7,000. The Opal Hill, minimum lot area is 6,000. Greyhawk, minimum lot area 5,000. So, we're actually, we exceed all of those. So, and those are other existing developments in the same master planned development. So, when looked at in that context, we actually exceed many of the existing lots in terms of size, and it goes on with the other front and side yard setbacks, as I mentioned. And some of them we kept the same, as in the five-foot, some of them we exceeded, as with the minimum lot size, and others we kept consistent. But these really, as I said, these served as a model for us, and then it was after that, those parameters were looked at, that the engineer went and started modeling this development in terms of the number of lots.
So, you're saying that all the homes in LPGA development reaches this criteria?
No.
All these setbacks?
No, each development...
You picked from each setback certain ones to come up with?
Well, they were guidelines, so we, by no means did we take the minimum of anything we could find, but...
Well, so was the guideline of the, of what you were originally looking at for the city. We had the guidelines too, 75 feet, 10 feet, 20 feet, 30 feet, 25 feet.
For our...
I mean, those are guidelines too. That's what you're supposed to be building too.
Yeah, for R1A, yes. But as I said, all of the developments throughout this area have been planned in this same framework through master planning and modifying and keeping it unique to each of the separate developments. And so, as I said, we were able to go through and really incorporate a lot of the features from a lot of the other neighborhoods.
What is the public benefit that you're, if we made these allowances, what is the benefit to the public for this?
Well, I think the public, the front 30-foot setback landscape buffer is really going to benefit this neighborhood. You're going to get the increase of, you know, residents in this area that will use the clubhouse. You know, we've spoken with the folks with the clubhouse, they've been supportive of this, and so we think having this property be incorporated into the larger development is a good thing.
Yeah, I like the setback, 30-foot setback, and that's in keeping with that area out there too. What's the average square footage of the home? Apparently you must have four different models if you're wanting four model homes. What's the average square footage of the home, of those homes?
Do you want to?
I'm not sure of their range, but we can't say that. Fifteen hundred to 1,000.
Yeah, we've been, we've got the International Residential Owners Association Development Code, which is, I would characterize as overlay for the entire development, and so these are, these are things separate from a zoning document that all development is beholden to. So, we've got these supporting consistency throughout the neighborhood as well.
Okay. Mr. Barhu?
Again, I find that not to be all true, because I do have a home out there, and the setbacks and the space between the houses are much larger than that, and so that is my concern too. Those are some of the areas that you've picked from to present, but there are other areas that are much larger, that have much larger homes and so forth. And again, even with sending one of the, sending memos out at the public meeting, I live in one of the subdivisions, didn't get anything, and I live pretty close to the clubhouse. And so, in that, in that light, I don't know who you actually notified at that particular time. But my concern is the lot reduction. You're bringing the lots down, you're making them smaller, you're putting more people in the small, in the same geographical area. Again, you're coming out of one house and going into another. There's really no big privacy, and I'm concerned about that, especially with that many houses in that area.
Well, I'd just for that, step aside and let me ask Dennis something that he said earlier.
That's okay.
Was it my understanding that the new land development code that we're rewriting to keep having so many controversies in the old land development code is going to mirror?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I was just looking it up right now. I've got a copy of the new land development code. What's happening is the R1A, the R1B, the R1C, they're being combined into one single-family zoning district, and they're, the actual lot sizes, the minimum lot sizes are all being brought into consistency, so we don't have that separation. In this, in the new land development code, when we look at that new single-family subdivision or single-family lots, we're looking at a minimum lot size of 50, excuse me, 5,000 feet with a minimum lot width of 50 feet, minimum lot depth of 100 feet, side setbacks of five feet for 50-foot lots, living area of 900 feet for the 50-foot lots. So, you see that the lot sizes are coming, coming down smaller in the new land development code. So, that R1A with those large lot sizes won't exist in the new land development code.
So, if the new land development code...
That's the minimum. That's, these are the minimums, yes.
So, if the new land development code was enacted right now, this wouldn't be a variance.
That wouldn't be a variance request.
And as soon as it's enacted, then this is, is what the new code's...
It'd be compatible with that, correct. Correct.
Now, this would still exceed those requirements, so would it not the new minimums? What I'm looking at here?
We can go, we can go down the list, the...
Let's go down the list. I want a clarification for it.
Sure. The, I've got a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet, and I don't have my paper here. If somebody, if you can put those dimensions back up onto the, onto the screen, I'd appreciate it. Minimum lot width of 50 feet, minimum lot depth of 100 feet, lot frontage on the street would be 50. And then it's broken down to, it's actually less than 50 feet for lots, because we do have some lots in the city that are less than 50 feet, and we had to account for those. Lots that would be less than 50 feet would have to be at least 900 square feet per dwelling unit. If they're between 50 and 60-foot lots, they'd have to be a minimum of 900 square feet. If they were greater than 60 feet, they'd have to be a minimum of 1,400 square foot lot, or homes. Lot coverage would be 35%, structure height 35 feet. Front yard setback for the less than 50-foot lots would be 25 feet. Between 50 and 60 feet would be 25 feet. 60 feet or greater would be 30 feet. Side street setbacks minimum would be 15 feet. And then again, for the smaller lots, you'd see a side setback interior of five feet. The 50 to 60-foot lots would be seven and a half feet, and the greater than 60-foot lots would be 10 feet with a rear setback of 25 feet. So, looking at this, looks like the only one that it would not be in compliance with is the, between 50 and 60-foot lot sizes would be seven and a half feet, according to the, what's being proposed in the new code.
Wow.
Thank you.
We've heard from the applicant public. This is your opportunity to speak. If there's anyone here that would like to speak at this time, please make sure you bring your green form up and give it to the secretary.
Before, if you have a mic, please use it, because it's hard to hear some of you back there. John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. I've been out to LPGA. I was out there while it was being built. I saw the disaster on the north side. When you come in from the north end, they had the small homes on the left-hand side and the big homes on the right-hand side. It's extremely noticeable. This was intended to be our Port Orange, our Ormond location. We have nothing prior to that. We have, on occasion, over the last 30 years, been chopping up LPGA, putting in townhouses, and that's where you're getting the small lot sizes, because these are townhouses. You heard somebody has a townhouse and they're only five feet apart. These are homes. These are not townhouses. These are not condos. These are homes. Five feet is extremely narrow. My parents' home...
Five-foot setback.
That's 10 feet.
Ten.
I understand that, but that's five feet, okay? When you have these, you're not really having 200, 400, $500,000 homes. You're having tiny homes. This is not what the area was intended for. The people that moved out there did not anticipate dropping the quality of their neighbors. When they bought out there, they bought with the intention of having a quality subdivision. You are taking that from them. When they saw the townhouses go in, everybody knows that townhouses are small, the lot sizes are small, and there's certain variances that they will accept, and these are on, and I wish you had a map, of where these townhouses are located. They're in the southwest corner of the property. You are putting this right next to the very center. Clubhouse is right there. I don't know how many miles this is from the clubhouse, but I'm willing to bet it's within sight of the clubhouse. So, I'm asking you, what are these quality homes going to be? What are they going to sell for? You heard that it's 900 square feet to 3,000 square feet. 900 square feet is one floor, one bedroom, one living room, one kitchen. That's my downstairs before I added on, okay? It's very tiny. I now have a house that's, what, seven bedrooms, five baths, on a lot size that was this original lot size. If you're going to shrink this to 50 feet or 60 feet, you're going to end up with a house on the lot. Either that or a very, very tiny house. And I'm asking you, if you're going to shrink the lot size by 23%, which is what they're asking you to do, understand that it's going to change the other houses and what they look like. This is not a townhouse project, these are houses. And what parks are they going to have? What amenities are they going to have? And what does this say for the neighbors? Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and your address for our records.
My name is Donald Paulson. My address is 24 Promenade at Lyonsport. The Promenade joins the property that they're talking about. I am the president of the Homeowners Association for Lyonsport. We did not receive any notification to come and meet with anybody. Like this gentleman said, I don't know anything about a meeting with them for the neighborhood. Regardless of that, my questions are, in Promenade, which apparently they didn't mention at all, the lots are 90 or 100-foot wide by 200 and something feet deep, which joins right next to this property that they're talking about, lowering to 60. Again, as a builder, all right, I would love to do that and put as many houses as I can into a property and make money. My questions are drainage problems, traffic problems, the road coming in, the road coming out, is it going to handle another 250 cars when they get this 131 homes done? And this property now that takes a lot of drainage from the golf course, where is that drainage going? Is it going to drain into my property, all right, and flood me when a hurricane comes? These are questions that, I don't know if these gentlemen are taking into consideration or really care about. They care about putting small homes in an area where we have 400 and 500,000 dollar homes, and they're going to put a, well, it says from, what was it, 1,500 square foot home? Was one of them? To 3,000? Well, a 1,500 square foot home isn't 300 and 400,000 dollar property. That's my concerns, and I'll be more than happy to talk to this gentleman anytime. Thank you.
With the, after we finish the questions, I'm going to ask the applicant to address their questions. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this issue? If you'd like to, now is the time. You can fill it out after you've finished speaking.
I'm Rosemary Romano. I live next door to Don Paulson, and my main concern is the things that this gentleman said and what Don said, and again, the property values. I mean, you know, we moved in there for a certain reason, so did everybody there, and this being such a small development, right next to Promenade, it just doesn't seem right. It doesn't seem fair. And my, you know, all of our concerns are the traffic and the drainage and just everything in general, so I just wanted to let you know.
Okay. Would you please give us your address for the records?
Sure. 25 Promenade at Lyonsport.
Thank you.
Okay.
And the green form. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? If not, we'd like to hear from the applicant to address the questions that were brought to the forecourt.
Thank you for the record, James Stowers, Wright, Casey &amp; Stowers. We spent months going back and forth with staff to ensure that the quality of the architecture in this development is consistent with the development around it. The development agreement has architectural standards, the development agreement has architectural visuals, but more importantly, I'm going to go back to these overriding documents which supersede the development agreement. We are required to maintain a level of quality for this development. These are not townhomes. These are single-family homes that are a minimum of 1,500 square feet. My client has spoken with Consolidated Tamoka. Consolidated Tamoka has been supportive of this. This is not about lowering property values. This is about maintaining property values and bringing more quality to this area. As far as amenities, you look at the map, this is next to the clubhouse. There are a number of... There are a number of amenities there. We realize this is a positive for the neighborhood in terms of proximity to that, and will have all sorts of opportunities for people walking through the neighborhood, as it was intended to be done. The price points that we've been discussing have been 200s, 300s. And, you know, as more of a technical planner or attorney on this, I'm looking at the details, the requirements. And when I, when you look at the market and you see the quality around there, a homebuilder is going to come in that wants to maintain that quality. And we've got enough teeth in this development agreement that it's required, in addition to the architectural standards and all the other things that, again, we've gone back and forth with staff for months on. As to drainage and traffic, I think Steve Boswell is happy to expand on that. You know, that's the engineering we've gone through a number of times. This has gone through a wash and rinse cycle with staff for months. As to the traffic, I'll take us back to the outset. The future land use for this was a hotel and conference center. That's not proven to be viable over the last 10 to 14 years. We think this is a viable use. It's a supportive, positive use that will contribute to this neighborhood. But just to put it in context, a hotel conference center and the traffic generation of that far exceeds what roughly 2 units per acre is going to generate. And we also do have a traffic analysis report that has been done, and from what I understand from Dennis, the traffic's, the city's traffic consultant has been working through that, and I haven't been notified of any issues whatsoever with that. So those are, I think I've addressed the issues, but, you know, I just want to continue to reiterate the quality that's built into the development agreement and the requirements that we, we have for this, for this development. Steve?
Steve Boswell with Parker, Mitchel, Morgan, and Sessiots, who are the engineer of record as well as a landscape architect. I have a kind of presentation board that was used at the neighborhood meeting.
If you'll put it in front of the microphone. Yeah.
Up to the side. There are 2 wetlands that exist on the east side between Promenade. I also want to make a point.
Again, this area, if you guys can see, it's not shaded. It is within the development or part of the boundary, but this weapon is being preserved. That was one of the issues that was brought up at the neighborhood meeting. Is that weapon coming out? The answer is no. So in addition to 120 feet there, there's approximately 200 feet of natural preservation area that'll exist on the east side, as well as this weapon here. And you can see, as the lots continue to kind of proceed to the north, these lot depths aren't 120, they're 200. So the square footage of the lots, all of a sudden, is not 20% less, but actually 20 to 30% more. And it's, you can see, there's some irregular parcels throughout here. There's a lake that's being dug here. You can see the size of the retention ponds in this development. There's one up here, the buffer that exists along the road in here. Again, that is outside of the 120 feet minimum lot depth. There is a buffer wall that is proposed along here, as well as some landscaping to provide a separation between the clubhouse for both, both parties involved. So, yeah, happy to answer questions regarding the drainage. There's plenty...
There's plenty of stormwater treatment, both from a quality and attenuation criteria, so that's it.
So the drainage itself, should we have the rain as we did just last month? The drainage is such that they wouldn't have to worry about flooding in that area?
Correct. The system's been designed per the city's criteria, which is actually a 100-year storm event, which is 11 inches of rain within 24 hours.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, Board, it's your time for discussion.
Well, again, I thought someone was going, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I thought somebody was going to address my original question as far as the number of homes. If you'd followed the existing requirements for square footage, how many homes would that be versus what you're asking for? How many extra homes are you getting by doing this, if we allow this?
Steve Boswell, Parker, Mitchel, Morgan, and Sessiots. I would just be speculating, but if it was a 10 to 15% reduction, I would think it would be then 10 to 15% additional homes, but that's only speculation. Again, like I said, it's irregularly shaped. There are several lots that far exceed the 70, or far exceed the 9,000 that's part of the R1A requirement.
Yeah, I looked closely at the lots. There's an awful lot of them. The majority, though, are the small lots. That's what concerns me. I was wanting to know about the tot lot, too. I wanted to understand...
Would you speak into the microphone, please?
The area that's referred to as a tot lot. Somebody explain that to me? And who's responsible for that?
The tot lot is located right here, between, I guess it'd be lots 51 and 50. It's right here. Again, this is all part of the existing retention system. Out at LPGA, it's kind of somewhat convoluted and tied together from a standpoint of drainage. But this area here, where overlooked is the lake, is not large enough for a regular lot, but it's intended to provide an area for kids to come play and within, without having to go outside of the confines.
So it's not a park as such? Just open space?
No, I don't think it's been planned from a standpoint, but it's a reserved parcel to allow...
So homeowners have the responsibility for maintenance and upkeep. It doesn't come back to the city for that. As an example, insurance, that's...
No, it would be part of the HOA for this individual development.
Yeah, like I said, I live in Pelican Bay, and I live in one of these communities. It's called The Villas. And I've been in the same house for 28 years. And we have, Pelican Bay's a 1,000-acre subdivision. Like any golf course community, they have different-sized houses, the, like I said, the townhouses. We have the condos. I was involved in a project in Port Orange at Cypress Head. We have the same project there. We have the large estate homes. They had the 10-foot side setback, I mean, the 10-foot setbacks between the houses. And like, I've been in my house 28 years, and I don't think my house is bringing the value of the other homes in Pelican Bay down. I moved because I wanted to downsize, and that was a house that suited me. I moved from 4,300 to 1,800. And like I said, I've been there, it's 28 years.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I was waiting to hear for public benefit.
Wait, hold on a second.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was wondering, on the new FEMA maps, where does this, is this property or this area designated a flood zone?
This area is, again, part of the, there's an overall drainage plan that was put together by Miller-Sallen back in 1993. All of the floodplain impacts, et cetera, have been taken into consideration. This has been permitted through the Water Management District. That was an issue, but has been addressed through the overall master system. So the base flood elevation is 23. The existing, or the proposed lot grades or finished floor elevations in this area are around 26. So we're well above the 100-year high water.
Mr. Moore?
Yes, I was wanting to hear about the public benefits from this, from these variances, and I hadn't heard yet.
Well, we've, we've talked about integrating this into the neighborhood. We've talked about the setbacks out on the frontage of the 30-foot landscape buffer. We've talked about the tot lot. We've, you know, and the, and the other positive benefit is more of the same positive momentum in Daytona Beach. We think this is a piece of LPGA that has, has been sort of out of the loop for a number of years, and this is a great time, a great opportunity for more positive development, which come with construction jobs and an increased tax base along with that. There are going to be more people moving here for the various things that are growing in this community that we all have been championing. And we think this is the type of quality development that can help support that.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. What would these homes be sold for? Give me a range.
I've been told by my client, 200s to 300s is the, is the range. And I, I think for the area, for the demographics, that, you know, the, the homebuilders that are looking in this area, they're, this is at the higher end in terms of the quality of what they want, and that's what we're, that's what we've been driving towards from the beginning.
Okay.
I just have a comment, far since this board comments. And again, I don't want it to be that I'm opposing the project. I'm just opposing the setbacks. I think that's it, because again, I have a, I have a home in that area. I know what I pay for it. I know the value of it. I know why I moved into that area. And again, I want the value of my home to certainly remain and to bring houses and so forth. That's way less than what I pay. Certainly does affect the area. And so that's my thing, the setbacks.
Are there any other comments?
Am I allowed to ask another question?
We need to cut it off. If you'll come on up now.
I just have, I just have one question. Craig Holmes is building in a, in a place called Centennial. What are their houses selling for, okay, when he says that the 200 to 300 is the houses that are selling, all right? I don't believe so. I believe they had a model home there for over $700,000. And what are the size lots that they're building in Centennial compared to the homes that they're going to want to build here? That's my question.
I think Board Member Hurt hit the nail on the head earlier when he talks about a master plan development that has various options for people in various stages of life and what they want. I'm looking here at Centennial, yes, the minimum size living area, 2,000, minimum lot area, 9,700 square feet. Absolutely, for that size of home, for people that want to live in that size space, that's an option. The beauty of LPGA, the master plan development, is it allows for various options for various stages of life that will support the country club, support the golf club, and support the community.
Okay. Mr. Nicholson? And this is it. We're going to cut it off and vote as soon as he finishes.
With these small homes, I'm asking, where are they going to go to school? There's been a problem with where these kids go to elementary school and where they go to junior high. There's a junior high right down the street, but they're not allowed to go to it. So where are these kids going to go to school? Thank you.
That will be an issue. There's a question. Can you give us an answer?
We've been in touch with Sarah Lee Morrissey with, with the school board, and that's part of the process that we're required to go through. So we're continuing to go through that process. That's completely separate from, from this one, but it's one that we will continue to go through. So I, you know, I can't stop, solve all the world's problems with this master plan.
I understand. I understand. All right, Board, before I ask you to vote, I'm going to say that I understand the project, but I'm not comfortable with not meeting with the people that live in the immediate area. I'm really not comfortable with that. If you've got individuals that live in the area adjacent to, and they did not receive letters for a meeting, I think that needs to be done. I really do. Mm-hmm.
And I apologize, I'd like, I'd like to address, the city has a neighborhood process, which is, I believe at this point, optional. We obviously jumped on it from the beginning that we were going to do it. I went to the Volusia property, Praeger's office. The threshold was within 300 feet of the property. So I applied for that threshold. We got the list. We sent out the list. Then for this meeting, the threshold was 500 feet. And so we sent out those notices and moved forward with, with that process. So we've done everything to, to get the word out. Now, I'm still sensing that there's some frustration from residents, perhaps outside the 300 feet, who then got the 500 foot. We would be happy to have another neighborhood meeting. You know, we've got, tonight is the 23rd. I think next month, we're going to the, the city commission. We'd be happy to have another sit-down meeting and continue to talk. I mean, we've been open from the beginning, and I'm disappointed that there's been this perception that we haven't been, when we, we had a neighborhood meeting that wasn't required, but we wanted to have it, and we've, we've met all the notice requirements. So, but we're happy to continue to, to talk with residents, anyone who'd like to talk to us about our project.
I'd feel more comfortable if the individuals within that 500 feet met, but it's up to the Board.
There's only 5 houses within that 500 feet. There's nothing left of them, okay, because of the clubhouse. And then we are all on 100-foot wide lots. So if they sent them out with 300 feet, they had 3 people they sent them to.
Thank you.
I make a motion. We approve resigning residential plan unit of element. Were we not going to discuss it a little bit, Board?
I thought we already did.
I didn't think the Board had had a chance to discuss it. We were discussing...
You have some comments?
Yeah, it sounds like I'm really against the project, and I'm not. I do want to see something built there. I am concerned now two ways. Not only with this, because I, quite truthfully, I was against these restrictions or what they were looking for, but yet I'm now upset because of our new land development code that's going through, which I did not realize yet. I was ill during that period of time, and so I wasn't paying attention, I should have. So I'm greatly disturbed about some of these variances that we're starting to, or changes that we're starting to see. I want to see something there. I think they're just trying to cram, you know, 10 pounds in a 5-pound bag. They're saying it was, and that disturbs me in that area, where, as it was pointed out, yeah, that's, that's a prime area for Daytona Beach. So I, I am, I'm disturbed that way, I'll put it that way. I don't know how other people feel, but that's my feeling.
Are there any other comments from the Board?
Yeah, I'm kind of agreeing with you, Larry. I mean, I understand about the setbacks being smaller. When you go through some of those neighborhoods and you see after the, you know, they have children, and after they grow up, you know, you don't have anywhere to put the cars. Usually the streets are narrow, and there's really nowhere to park. It really looks bad when you have those neighborhoods and you see cars everywhere. Sometimes they even put them on the grass, so...
And again, I'm not against the project itself. It's just, you know, proximity of the houses, the setbacks, the variances that they're asking for. And yes, there are strict HOAs out there. You can't park on the grass, and you can't do certain things. They're really strict. So I would like to see definitely some difference. And I would, I guess I would actually like to see them meet the requirements as actually stated there.
Mr. Neal?
Everything sounds really good and fit for the area, except for when we talk about 3 to 5 people in a 500-foot square area. It sort of limits the ability of communication. It sort of cuts back a little bit, but as far as the project itself, it has a little bit for everybody who's moving into the neighborhood. bit for everybody who's moving into the neighborhood. And the quality is there in the structures. So this is what we have to include also, as far as how it looks. Will it demean or cut short the value of the properties already existing? And from what I could see, it does have a variance as far as that goes, because of the ability to put the different sized homes in the lots to sort of enhance the density of the properties. And then sometimes it hurts when you move in and you've got a ship and somebody's got a rowboat. But the whole thing is, when we look at this, we have to consider, how would it benefit the county or the city of Daytona? And that's what I'm looking at. I'm looking at your tax base, looking at an increase. The schools' problems will be solved, and everything around it will enhance the area. So my point is, I like the project. Do agree about the people around us. We should have had maybe 100% participation when we questioned the neighbors and brought before them the value of the project. But there's nothing else we can do at this time except amend it, I think, to help both sides.
Is this one?
Yes, it's on.
I lived for many years in a neighborhood where all of our lots were two acres. And they built next to us a, a neighborhood with lots, smaller lots. It was very obvious to everybody, they were two different neighborhoods. Ours had a name, like these have, for their neighborhood, and theirs had a name for their neighborhood. Two totally different ones. So it did not affect my property values at all. I see sometimes we have to move a little bit, and I think with our new land development code, we've recognized that there are changes that have to be brought into place to make this viable community for everyone, not just the ones that need the large spaces. And I don't think the difference between a five-foot and a seven-and-a-half-foot is going to make that big of a difference. So to me, I think it's, it's a, I like the project, I think it'll be good for our city, and I will be voting for it.
If there are no other comments, we need six to approve it.
Yes.
Am I correct?
Correct.
Six votes to approve it. Would you do roll call, please?
Let me make the motion first.
May, yes. You may go ahead.
Make a motion, we approve rezoning residential plan unit development, RPUD Cypress Point, DEV 2014-046.
Second.
Mr. Moore. Mr. Neal.
Mr. Neal.
Mr. Neal did the second. It has been motioned in second. All those in favor of the project?
Do you want to roll call?
Yes, please. Let's do it that way, roll call.
Mr. Hurt? Yes. Mr. Moore?
Reluctantly, yes.
Mr. Dragan? Oh, excuse me. Ms. Washington?
I like the project, but I think they really need to go back and talk with the, with the neighbors in that community. And I'm not ready to vote on this, so I'm going to say no.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Barhu?
No.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Vire?
Yes.
Five to two.
The motion fails.
Well, no, the motion passed, but.
Five to two.
But it'll go as a negative.
Recommendation.
A recommendation to the City Council as a negative recommendation.
Five to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Rezoning plan commercial development, First Amendment, DEV 2014-111, two men and a truck, PCD.
Can we hear from staff on this item?
Thank you. Dennis Mrazek, planning with the City of Daytona Beach. This next item is, is a request by Harry Newkirk, of Harry, excuse me, Newkirk Engineering Incorporated and PJL Holdings Incorporated, on behalf of National Bakery Industrial Owner LLC, to amend the existing plan commercial development agreement for property located at 370 South Nova Road, to add BR1 retail and OP office professional uses, and to allow moving and storage facilities for two men and a truck use. The site is located at Cedar and Nova Road, just north of Cedar. There's an aerial for you. It's, it is also located just south of the museum entrance off of Nova Road. Excuse me. The, the land use of the property is retail, and the current zoning is planned commercial development or PCD. Currently, this is the Merida Daytona Facility PCD. The PCD was approved back in 1997. The property's 1.6 acres. When this was originally approved, uses permitted for the property included retail sales and distribution of bakery products. They, they were in, in use for, for a number of years, for about 10, 15 years, until Hostess Bankruptcy shut the, shut the operation down. This will be, and I should point out that the, the building has been vacant since then for, I believe, a little over two years. This is the First Amendment. This is going to be amending and restating the original PD agreement. It's going to be renamed to the Two Men and a Truck PD. It's going to add moving and storage facilities to the permitted uses in addition to the BR1 and the OP uses. This is going to allow greater flexibility of uses for the property, and that was one of the issues that the, the old PD agreement had. It was very limited on exactly what could go in there, and, and I think that's one of the reasons why it, it sat, sat empty for a while. I wanted to point out, I also provided a copy, I don't usually do it, but I provided a copy of the existing PD agreement for you, so you can see exactly what that looked like, and a copy of the new PD agreement in there. And you can see why we're actually bringing this thing up to date, making it more current with our, our current regulations within the city. The property itself, a couple of pictures that were provided for you. Again, vacant for a couple of years. This is going to be moving a new use in there and bringing it back to life. As far as the recommendations, staff recommends approval to amend the Two Men and a Truck PCD agreement, formerly known as Merida Daytona Facility PCD, to add BR1 and OP uses and to allow moving and storage facilities. The item is tentatively scheduled to be heard by the City Commission for first reading on December 3rd and second reading on December 17th, 2014, and that will be a public hearing. An affirmative vote of six by the Planning Board shall be required to recommend approval to the City Commission. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Okay. Board, do you have any questions for staff? May we hear from the applicant?
Thank you.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Harry Newkirk, Newkirk Engineering, 1370 North US Highway 1, Ormond Beach, Florida. This POD agreement will allow two men and a truck to operate at this vacant building. They will have 25 employees, seven trucks, delivery trucks. Those trucks are similar to a jumbo, jumbo U-Haul vehicle. The site will be brought up to code with landscaping. It has the existing irrigation system, we'll revamp that and bring the site up to life with landscaping. The site has a lot of trash on it and whatnot, stormwater system has been maintained some time. All that'll be cleaned up, building repainted. The monument sign has pylon base. We will put a three-foot base with brick to match the building, so that'll be brought up to code. And utility improvements will consist of a sanitary inspection manhole. And I can answer any questions y'all may have.
Board?
No, I don't have any questions. I'm just glad to see an unoccupied building go in, you know, and someone spruce it up and clean it up. That's been neglected for a long time, so I'm glad to see that happen.
On a main road, so that's good.
Yes.
Want to point out, too, that we asked the applicant to put the base on that sign that'll match more of the museum, the tire place down the street, all the other ones that have the monument signs. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this project? Anyone in the audience that wishes to speak against the project? All right. Board, any discussion?
I think it's an excellent fit for that building.
Long overdue. May I have a motion from the Board?
I make a motion that we approve a DEV 2014-111, Two Men and a Truck, PCD.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, have the same right. Motion carries.
Item number six. Rezoning residential plan unit development, DEV 2014-120.
Can we hear from staff?
Good evening. Reed Burger, redevelopment director. This is a request to rezone .58 acres of land, or acre of land, it should really say, located at 828 George Ingram Boulevard. And that lot actually contains a total of 1.015 acres total, but only approximately half of it is proposed to be rezoned to the planned unit development, residential planned unit development. And currently, the, the south half is RP residential, and that's the part that, that we're going to talk about, is, is that south half, that's where the building is. The north half is, is, the intent is not to rezone it. I think you should have a memo from me with two maps that, that you received this evening. And do apologize, but I wanted to make it very clear that, that it is only the south half of the site that we're talking about being rezoning. That wasn't clear when I was sending that message to the Midtown Board, and I want to make sure as this goes forward, that, that we clarify that. But it is, it is the intent of the applicant to try to reestablish a dormitory that used to be there since 1960. The building was, was occupied until about 2004, so that's what, 44 years? And then it's been vacant. There was an effort to try to turn it into an office building, that never materialized. But this is another case, we're just talking about an abandoned building. And, and here we are now, looking at the opportunity to, to bring it back to what it was. It was an eight-room dormitory, the intent is to bring it back to that. And a couple of points I'd like to make on this is that there will be, in addition to improving the building that's been vacant and vandalized and over, over the years, the, the current owner, Mr. Earl McCrery, has, has looked at adding a lot of landscaping around this building, a significant amount for the site plan. So, so when you look, if you've been around this site, you've seen that the, the trees are in really bad shape, they're, they're torn down, they're dying. So a lot of that overgrown vegetation will be replaced by some new landscape, and it's going to look much, much better than what you see now in the front, which is sort of barren and has a chain link fence, will have a nice decorative fence that will be placed around the property. Again, the intent is to bring back an opportunity for BCU students to reoccupy the building. The difference is, this time it will be privately owned, it will be on the tax rolls. That's something we like to see in the redevelopment areas. With that, just real quickly, I want to show you a map here of, of the, where we show roughly the site where the future land use has changed. You'll recall, we just went through a comprehensive plan change for the entire Midtown area, and we're about to go through the rezoning process. We've already been through Midtown, that will be coming to you. But right now, I just want to point out that this is a, a commercial transition area now. It's, so its land use has changed, and it's still compatible. So the dormitory itself and its, its use, even though we don't have the term dormitory in the zoning ordinance, and that's why we're having this request for a planned unit development, it is, in fact, going to meet the, the idea of mixed-use residential, commercial, that's the future intent, to have some flexibility in there along that corridor. This just shows you the, the close-up of, of the RPUD area, which is that, again, south section that we're talking about, not the residential to the north part of that property. And then it just lets you know that the, the land uses that are actually around it, there's, there's really a compatibility in terms of where that building is, how it's being occupied. Church on one side, there is one residential lot on the other side, again, still in that, that RP zone, which will become that, that commercial transition area in the future. But we think primarily that what you see there is something that will be compatible along a major corridor. And picture that just shows you the building. The building itself is also going to be on the exterior, that will be improved, brought up to redevelopment standards, which means that the brick will have to be cleaned, just the, the tired look will be, will be brought back up, and you'll, you'll see something a little more crisp to look at. And then just to formally give you that recommendation, which is, is staff and the redevelopment board are recommending, the planning board recommend approval of the request to rezone the .58-plus acres of land located at 828 George Ingram Boulevard, from the RP residential professional to the RPUD residential planned unit development for the purpose of reestablishing a dormitory use. And I want to go on to say that there is that residential part in there, and in the formal description, we did say our, the, we did describe that the, in, in that legal publication, that it included that residential district, just because we're so close to the line. So I'm still, we're going to just include that in there as well as part of that, that recommendation, that we stay consistent with what was in the publication and continue on. So that's, that's staff's report.
They are improving the fencing, too.
Yes, they are. They're replacing the, the chain link fence there with a decorative aluminum fence.
Any questions for the staff? Okay. Can we hear from the applicant?
Madam Chairman, members of the Board, my name is Mark Doust. I'm a project engineer for the applicant with the firm, Mark Doust and Associates. Our offices are located at 536 North Halifax, Daytona Beach. Not building anything new and exciting before tonight, but we are putting a vacant building back to use. Although we're not adding under the building, it's going to be brought up back to its original condition, so that's, that's certainly a big plus. The site is a corner site, so when we say we're taking down the chain link fence, there's chain link that runs all the way along the frontage. And that is all coming down, it gets a brand-new, fresh landscape package, and that's probably what you're going to see, the biggest difference, because it is such a, a visible corner site. As part of the rezoning process, we did send out, I think it was 113 certified mails, and it's unusual, but I didn't get one phone call. So I think that's because we're just simply reestablishing something that's been there for a long time. I'll tell you, when we went to the Midtown Board, they seemed very enthusiastic about the project and restoring that vacant building back to use. Also with me tonight is Earl McCrery. He is the owner, and he is available for questions, as am I. That's pretty much all I had to report. I'm looking for your support tonight. Thank you.
Board, are there any questions for the applicant?
It was unanimously approved right at the Midtown Board.
It was.
Okay.
All I can say is, we desperately need it to be filled.
Yes.
It's been empty for a long time. I've been a member of the Church's Across the Street for 13 years, and there's nothing there. So this time, I was so pleased to hear him say, "I'm going to make something out of it." So, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I have some comments, but I'm happy to hear that it's going to be restored. Being a native of Daytona Beach and being a part of the group that actually built that building, I just have some questions as to the dormitory itself. In looking at, going through the paperwork, it stated that the idea was for, they were looking forward to this being a dormitory for Bethune-Cookman students. I'd like to know how many students will this place house?
It's sized for eight students.
Still the same, eight students. And the only thing that's being done inside is to bring it up to code.
That's correct. I think there's a big commercial kitchen in there that's no longer needed. Part of that will probably be removed. But the layout on the inside was kind of designed for this, so it actually functions quite well.
Right. Originally, it was a scholarship house.
Yep. Has quite a history.
Yeah. If there are no other questions, I'm going to ask if there are comments from the public. Anyone to speak in favor of? Don't forget your green form.
Sorry, up there. It has three locations on it, four, six, and seven.
All right, I have you. Go ahead, Ms. Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. I'm definitely in favor of this. I remember when it was a dorm, a scholarship house. But as I speak on all of these issues that require loss of tax revenue because of churches and schools, et cetera, you have a map in your packet, and someone alluded to the fact that there is a church nearby. I drove it this afternoon. There are 12 churches nearby, and there are only two on the map. There are 12 churches. There is a park, a city park. I call it Cypress. There is St. Timothy's on that property, very close to this property. There is a school called Bethune-Cookman College that's on Nova that's not shown here. So about 80% of this road is off the tax rolls. I know you can't do anything about it, and I don't want to do anything about it with this particular property. I just want to let you be aware, when these things come up, and they do come up often, that we are taxed differently than our surrounding communities. We lose a tremendous amount of tax revenue because we are so freely giving our property to the Volusia School Board. We have six elementary schools, two junior highs, two high schools, a high school and junior high that our kids cannot go to, but it's in our, we lose that tax revenue. We have five colleges in our city. We have a tremendous amount of county, school board, city property. So I'm asking you again, okay this, but be aware that we are, again, 80% of this road, which is all in Midtown, both sides of the street, Midtown, above all of our CRAs, need funding. And this, again, takes money away from Midtown as well. Thank you.
Now, it's my understanding, this is going on the tax roll.
It's going on the tax roll.
It was off, and it's coming back on.
I just have a bold comment.
Sure.
Again, I sit on the redevelopment board, the Midtown Redevelopment Board, and this was brought before us. A great project. Of course, lots of monies have been put into George Ingram throwaway there. I think the project would definitely be a welcome site. It would take care of an ISO. This has been sitting vacant for a while. Again, the new shrubs and the new look and appearance will certainly bring the building back to life. And I'm definitely, I know it was unanimously approved at our board meeting, so I'm definitely for the project. It's going to be a great asset.
Great. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this project? Mr. McQuary?
Good evening. My name's Earl McQuary, and I'm at 133 Coral Circle in South Daytona, Florida. And I'm excited about the project by the mere fact that I get to work with the university and reestablish something that was at one time a foster home, and then it became a dormitory for the university. And I believe at one point, it was the Kellogg House. I've been working with the university in the housing area. They're looking at making it the Bonner Foundation Home as we move forward, which will allow students to serve within the community through this particular home. It's more of a house than it is a dormitory, based upon its size and based upon its look and its use. And through the Bonner Foundation, I don't know if you're aware of that, that the students there are students that have needs, but however, they must put time into the community, 10 hours a week, for the time in which they are there in that particular home. And during the summertime, when they're not in that home, they have to volunteer 240 hours to the community. So I'm excited about it, looking forward to it, and thank you very much for your vote and your approval.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak against the project? If not, board, comments? Any discussion? All right, then. We'll move forward. May I have a motion?
Yeah, make a motion that we approve DEV 2014-120, McQuary Dormitory.
Second.
It's been motioned in second.
Mr. Neal, second?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Can't tell my voice yet?
It's been motioned in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The motion carries.
Agenda item number seven, residential planned unit development, RPUD, DEV 2014-124, substantial modification to Eagle Landing Apartments, RPUD.
Good evening. You are the asking planner with the City of Daytona. This is a request by Parker Mitchenberg PE, Parker Mitchenberg and Associates, Inc. on behalf of Ambling University Development Group, LLC, to approve modifications to the approved development standards for the residential planned unit development by reducing front setbacks from 25 feet to 22.5 feet to accommodate the Eagle Landing Clubhouse at Eagle's Landing, located east of Clyde Morris Boulevard, south of Shady Place. The site location is approximately 500 feet east of Clyde Morris Boulevard, immediately south of Terrace Avenue, aka Shady Place, unimproved right-of-way. Proposed changes are to reduce the front setback from 25 feet to 22.5 feet to accommodate the redesign of a clubhouse and pool area. Section 13 of the RPUD agreement allows for permanent modifications, up to 10% increases to building height and in setbacks, to decreased setbacks. Additional modifications are to replace the six-foot masonry wall with a six-foot PVC fence, the addition of a maintenance garage. And if you look at your staff report on page four, there's a photo that shows the area where the maintenance garage would be located. It's also to, in order for the maintenance garage to go into place, they had to remove three parking spaces. And so with the removal of the three parking spaces, the parking would be reduced to 295 spaces from 298, which still exceeds the 288 that was required by the code. This is a rendering of what the proposed clubhouse area and pool may look like when they finished. It's not a final drawing, but it's a rendering of what it will possibly look like. Recommendation, the substantial modification of this RPUD is the final action by the planning board. Based on staff analysis and review, the requested substantial modification to the Eagle Landing Apartments RPUD will be in compliance with the ODC and comprehensive plan if approved by action of the planning board. A majority vote of the planning board members present in voting is required for approval of the application for the substantial modification to the PD agreement. This concludes staff's report. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
Sure.
Yeah, I see that it falls within the 10% reduction that you're talking about, Rosebud. That's facing a sidewalk out there where you're pulling back a five-foot sidewalk. Is that correct? And is there a street out there at all on the other side of that sidewalk, or not? Am I not looking at this right?
I'm not sure where you're looking.
Well, I'm looking at, on page three, the items that you mentioned as far as the maintenance garage and the parking spaces and such, that really doesn't have anything to do with the two-and-a-half-foot variance that you're asking for. But it's the difference in how you reduced clubhouse, but apparently added other rooms or things like that, and extended outaways to get the extra two-and-a-half feet. And I'm wondering, what's on the other side of that two-and-a-half feet? I see one drawing that had a sidewalk. But what's on the other side of the sidewalk? I don't know. I can't tell from anything.
That's a question. I'll let the applicant address that question.
All right.
Any other questions for staff before we bring the applicant up?
Good evening. Steve Boswell with Parker Mitchenberg and Associates. I'm the engineer of record, as well as the project's landscape architect. The Lowmans originally were the developers of the property. When they came in, they had their ideas, and since have sold the property to a development company named Ambling, which, as you can see from the kind of previously approved site plan versus the proposed, they wanted to embellish the clubhouse. There's, you know, different, have it more of a community environment, as well as increase the size of the pool, barbecue areas and so forth, covered porches. So it's, the dimensions of the clubhouse have both increased. There was no problem increasing it to the east and west. There's plenty of room to do that, but it was the, basically extending to the north. We're kind of limited to how much we can go to the south because of the existing setbacks, parking. You know, we're kind of tied there. So the two-and-a-half feet was, you know, what originally we thought was just an administrative variance, staying within that 10%. But there's no change to the landscaping to the north. The sidewalk's still there. It's still a butt Shady Place, which is the existing unimproved right-of-way, which currently is, you know, they're going like gangbusters out there, so.
So it's not an approved right-of-way through there, then?
Currently not. It will be, though. It's going to be the stand, it's actually five feet.
It's platted, but they're building.
They're building the road, the utilities, and so forth. So the sidewalk's proposed, standard requirements for the city's right-of-way.
You can tell I just don't care for variances. You know, two-and-a-half feet, it seems like it. I think I could look at it and see where you can squeeze in the two-and-a-half feet.
Any other? Were you satisfied with your answer? Okay. Any other questions? Okay. No other questions?
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this project?
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. I believe he answered one of my questions. If you recall, the last time they were here, there was a question on the roadway going in and how's it, and where it was going to come from, et cetera. So apparently, it's settled at Shady Place, if I believe correctly. The second question, I think, if I recall, was where the garbage pickup would be and where it would hit, that kind of stuff. I don't know if they've had, my drawings don't show that. But I know that was an issue the last time. And one thing that didn't pop up, but I would like to know if there's a connect between the Emory Riddle project that's going on on Clyde Morris, if there's a way for these students, instead of going all the way around out to Nova Road and back to Clyde Morris, if there's going to be some way that they can cut across or a fence or something, a sidewalk, so that the kids can literally cut through, if there's a possibility of that. Okay?
The project to the south or the project to the west?
The project to the west is Emory Riddle. Remember, it was approved for their research park. And this is literally back-to-back to it. So it would be a shame if it's Emory Riddle students not being able to access it in a very easy, reliable way, especially if they happen to work at the research park. Thank you.
Mr. Boswell?
Currently, there's access to Clyde Morris Boulevard. That property is leased to Waste Pro, which there was an exception to pull a portion, which happens to be the width of a required right-of-way to connect to Clyde Morris Boulevard. So currently, that has been done. It's under construction. Utilities have already been brought through that area, so there is access to Clyde Morris from this property.
And I think the property John was talking about with the research park is not immediately next time. There's a piece between.
In between them, yeah.
Correct.
Mm-hmm. Correct. All right, thank you. Any, anyone that would like to speak against the project? Board comments? No comments? All right. May I have a motion, please, from the floor?
Make a motion that residential planned unit development, RPUD, DEV 2014-124, substantial modification, Eagle Landing, be approved.
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, have the same right. The motion passes. Okay. Next item, other business. Downtown Redevelopment Board, met on October 7th at 12:00 noon in Commission Chambers. We had the usual agenda, roll call, approval of minutes. We discussed the Orange Avenue project, the pluses and the large number of minuses with the construction and the inconvenience. And the big item on the agenda was conditional use, I mean, I'm sorry, conditional use for a Chicago-style bar and grill. And that was at 174 North Beach Street. That item was approved. There were no public comments. Very few board comments, but they related to, of course, the Orange Avenue project. And we were adjourned in 30 minutes. Next item, Midtown.
Attended a Midtown meeting on October 14th at 6:00 PM in chambers. We had code enforcement update, police department updates, and talked a little bit about the Public Works Orange Avenue presentation. We had that. We did hear the DEV 2014-120, McQuary Dormitory, and that was unanimously approved. We also had the master plan, the Midtown master plan, and that also was approved. And we were adjourned after that.
All right. Main Street. Did we have anyone to attend Main Street?
Mr. Davis was our appointment. Mr. Davis has resigned recently. He has conflicts of interest and said they're a positive, but he can't make it anymore. And he was our liaison to the Main Street. So if we have a volunteer for that, we appreciate it tonight, or we can discuss it next time. We don't have a, currently have a representative for the Main Street.
Okay.
Boswell, can we have a full board?
All right. We'll move back to the next meeting. At this point, comments from the public. Any comments, Mr. Public?
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. One thing, which goes back 78 years. We discussed submerged land, and I talked to staff. Nothing's changed. I think you recall, when it's popped up, Edith Shelley was on the board. And what had happened was that they had decided, the developers had decided to buy the old Marina and put in condos. And it was illegal to put condos on Beach Street there. There wasn't enough land. And so what they decided, the staff said, "Well, if you turn it into a hotel, then you could do that." And because of the way the code had been written, they were allowed to use a substantial amount of submerged land, even though the width of the property was what, 15 feet or whatever? They were able to build this massive development. They were able to build this massive development from the sidewalk to the end of the water. We decided that we would, well, you all had decided that you all would discuss this. And then they said, "Oh, well, the land development code is coming in. We'll wait for them." And then they waited, and they waited, and it's been seven years. And it popped up, and it wasn't changed. It wasn't discussed. So I'm asking you to discuss this, if you want to continue the submerged land as we've always done it, and screw up again in the future, or change it so that these problems won't happen. And another one popped up today. I was not aware of the 50-foot width on properties. It just passed me by. I don't know, it was never discussed, and I didn't have the time to read all this. I go to the meetings, because I'm in Miami. But two doors down from my house, they took a 100-foot width lot, cut it in half, and I have two 50-foot lots. There is a driveway down the middle. You all are familiar with parking lots in a parking space in a parking lot. That's your 10-foot. So when you drive in to a parking space, visualize that's the distance between, except for maybe, some are nine, some are 10. But that's the distance between the houses. And if that's going to be the standard for the entire city of Daytona Beach, we're in problem, because people don't assume that when they have these nice houses all over the place, that somebody can buy a big section next to them, and they don't have to tell squat to anybody. And these little dinky houses can go anywhere in the city. So I think it's something that you may wish to discuss. Thank you.
We addressed the submerged lands. You know, John has been reminding us to do that. When we did the land development code, we did discuss that. And the recommendation from Claryon, the recommendation from staff, and the recommendation from this board was to calculate floor ratio, the density as anything that the applicant owns. If it's submerged, if it's wetlands, it's whatever. If they own it, they're paying taxes on it. The density would be calculated on what they own. So that's how it's addressed in the code that's moving forward.
Did you check with other communities around? I know we were asking to check with Ormond Beach because they have a policy on submerged lands. Did we do any of that as we were considering this? That was a huge thing, what John was talking about when it came up.
I don't recall what our research was relative to Ormond. Our research was primarily what Claryon had brought to us from the numerous communities they were working with. That was initially their recommendation when we discussed it in more detail. We agreed. I think the project John was talking about never got built, and it was the Marina Point 2, I think. And the project didn't get built. As I recall, towards the end, before the economy went and they decided not to build it, they actually didn't even need the density for the submerged lands. They met the density without that, but.
I think that was, no, this was a different one, I believe.
Because that Marina Point 2 had submerged.
Prior to Marina Point 2, that was another, but this was prior to that.
Any staff comments?
Yeah, two things. One, is I wanted to point out that at the November 5th City Commission meeting, they're going to have first reading. Actually, it's a public hearing on the new land development code. Appreciate all of your time and effort, and some of your extraordinary time and effort on our advisory board, and extra meetings we had in reviewing those details. That is going for the City Commission for the first. How that goes, there will be the following meeting for implementation of that code, or adoption of that code. We've asked that that be delayed in terms of implementation, because there's a whole lot of forms, procedures, and details that we have to get in place. But that hearing is scheduled for the 5th of November. And last but not least, I'd like to introduce our new boss, Gary Schuman. He's the deputy city manager, and I welcome him. He's only been here a few weeks, but I know he's been keeping extremely busy and meeting with a whole lot of people, and welcome him.
Good evening. I think I've met several of you in other board meetings, too, so hopefully you just get familiar with putting a name to a face. And without boring you with a lot of background, I've been doing planning for about 30 years and have been in city management for about 25 of those years as a manager. So once again, I just wanted to introduce myself so that you know who I am, and feel free to call if you need to. Thank you.
Again, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any comments?
I do. Again, pretty much a vision for our city. I see our city as a great place to live, certainly a great place to do business and so forth. And looking at the Comprehensive Plan, the Master Plan, and all of these coming together, but just looking at the vision of the city. I also noticed that we are trying to cram a whole lot more into our city and not have it as, spread it out as some of the other cities. So folks are going and moving into Port Orange, Ormond Beach, these other areas. And I think we really need to take a good look at what is the actual vision for the city of Daytona Beach, and what do we really want our city to be? I certainly want it to be a place that I would be proud of, a place that I would probably spend, my kids would grow up and grandkids and so forth. But it seems like when you're looking for certain amenities, they are at other places other than Daytona. So I really need for us to keep that in mind when we're looking at Daytona Beach and allowing a lot of these variances. And we have standards, but yet we are diminishing our standards and allowing folks to come in just to have them in. I think we have to have a set of standards. We really, really need to have a set of standards that we can keep a certain appearance. Thank you.
Amen. What was the reasoning of getting to a 50-foot width in the land development code? How did that come about?
Well, the, the new zoning map, as a result of this code, is combining and minimizing. Right now, we've got 80 different zoning categories, so we're combining a lot of them. We're combining, I think, the four single-family zoning districts into one. The intent, because most of the single-family that's built in the city is on lots that were created before our zoning code. So we are, our minimum for the new single-family designation will actually have less non-conformities, will have more flexibility. And they took, they took the lot width, many of the dimensional standards out of the smaller, single-family standards that are in our current code and recommended that being the combined one that's moving forward.
I'm not so sure. We shouldn't have at least had two statements where they combined it all.
That's the minimum, too. That's not the maximum.
I understand, but once it's there, it's the minimum.
Yes.
You've opened the door. That's.
But the door was opened a long time ago. Like I said, the Pelican Bay community, we have the estate section. We have the golf villas that have the 10-foot setbacks between the two. Out here at Iberia, we have the same situation where they have the patio homes, or golf villas, whatever they're called. They've got a 10-foot setback between the houses. The Neshen Bay, the newest subdivision in the Deuce Alarna, exactly the same thing. Cypress Head, Spurstrick Flyin', every community that we have here that's a golf course community has estate lots. They have patio lots. They have duplex lots. They have fourplex lots, and they have condominium lots. And that's just the master player. That's why we're revising our code, because it's so, it's before that was allowed and it was there, then it came out, and then now it's going back in. And just like I said, you know, when they were talking about, it reduces the property values. I don't think my house takes away from property values in Pelican Bay, because I'm on a small lot that's 10 foot between the houses. Because that's how come there's sections in different places, so that you can have everything in a community that someone would want. Either they're older, they don't want a yard to keep up, and they don't want a big house to keep up. Or they're younger, and they want a house, and they've got three or four kids. Then they go to a different section where that's allowed. You know, that's all I was saying.
I think my issue was the proximity of the project. I think it's an excellent project, but I just thought the proximity to the higher-priced homes. And then, when you think about it, if they sent out notices and they were within 300 feet, you only sent notices to three people.
Three people. That's all they were required?
Let me address that, too. In the new code, which isn't in place yet, but will be soon, the standard is to notify people within 500 feet, but also to notify the associations that are around it, so that the association can involve. I believe they probably didn't do that. It's not a requirement. But in the new one, whatever associations are around it, we get the letter, and they will be participating in those meetings.
That was, that was a concern also.
You don't include the homeowners association, you lose over half your battle.
Any other comments? If none, we are adjourned.